Good morning. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Gadsden City Council meeting. I'd like to remind everyone, please make sure all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham?
President.
Councilman Smith?
Here.
Councilman Avery?
Here.
Councilman Beck?
Here.
Councilman Wilson?
Here.
Councilwoman Minatra?
Here.
And Councilman Robinson?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Smith to lead the invocation. Please stand or remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear Father, we come to you now in the humblest way we know how. Come about here as humble hearts, realizing it's in you that we live, move, and have our being. God, we dare not lean to our own understanding, but in all our ways, we acknowledge you, knowing that you'll direct our path. We need your wisdom, your guidance, your direction, even in this meeting, on today as we continue to lead the great citizens of our city. We thank you for our mayor, staff, we thank you for the council. We look up all of our students and faculty and staff, assistant superintendent that is here today, God. We just act that you continue to keep your hand upon us, that we can continue to be diligent to the thing that you've called us to. We give you every bit of the praise, the glory, and all the honor. We ask it all. In Jesus' name we pray in all that agree. Say, "Amen."
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in council meetings held on April 1st. So moved. Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of March 28th through April 3rd. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Item 7 on our agenda is reserved for proclamations and commendations. This week is National Library Week. We're going to have a proclamation, I believe, for our library, and our director of our library, Craig Scott, is with us. Craig, come forward, please. And anybody else with you that you have brought, love to have you.
Good morning.
Morning, Ruth. How are you?
I'm doing well. I hope everyone else is doing well.
Yes.
All right. We have them here. All right, so the proclamation reads, "Whereas the Gadsden Public Library sparks creativity, fuels imagination, and inspires lifelong learning, offering a space where individuals of all ages can explore new ideas and be drawn to new possibilities. Whereas the Gadsden Public Library serves a vibrant community hub, connecting people with knowledge, technology, and resources while fostering civic engagement and critical thinking. Whereas the Gadsden Public Library provides free and equitable access to books, digital tools, and innovative programming, ensuring that all individuals, regardless of background, have the support they need to learn, connect, and thrive. Whereas the Gadsden Public Library partners with schools, businesses, and organizations, connecting the dots to maximize resources, increase efficiency, and expand access to essential services, strengthening our entire community. Whereas the Gadsden Public Library empowers job seekers, entrepreneurs, and lifelong learners by providing access to resources, training, and opportunities that support career growth and economic success. Whereas the Gadsden Public Library nurtures young minds through story times, literacy initiatives, fostering a curiosity and a love for learning. Whereas dedicated librarians and library workers at the Gadsden Public Library provide welcoming spaces that inspire discovery, collaboration, and creativity for all. Whereas the Gadsden Public Library and its staff is joining other librarians and library workers across the country to celebrate National Library Week under the theme, Drawn to the Library. Now therefore, Craig Ford, Mayor of the City of Gadsden, Alabama, hereby joins with the Gadsden City Council proclaiming April 6th, April 12th, 2025, April 6th through 12th, I'm sorry, 2025, as National Library Week in the City of Gadsden. During this week, I encourage all residents to visit the Gadsden Public Library, explore its resources, and celebrate all the ways that our library draws us together as a community. Signed by Craig Ford, Mayor, attest, Iva Nelson, City Clerk."
Mr. President, council members, thank you very much for the proclamation. As Ruth said, it is National Library Week, and today is National Library Workers' Day across the country. So, two of my staff members have joined me, Carol Wright and LaShonda Williams, representing our 31 staff members that we have at the library. So, we greatly appreciate the proclamation, and y'all have your library cards, right? I know the students do. There, thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, next on our list for proclamations and commendations is Ms. Janie Browning. Janie's with the Gadsden City School System and is going to talk to us about the STEM Fest that's coming up. Welcome, Janie.
Thank you, guys, for having me again this year. I have flyers that I can give to you guys if you have them.
Sure. Give it to the City Clerk's office there. Thank you.
First, good afternoon. I was going to say, Mayor and council members, thank you for having me today. You guys have always supported Gadsden City Schools, and last year, you were a strong supporter of our STEM Fest. So, I want to invite you again to come check out STEM Fest on behalf of Gadsden City Schools and our 21st century after-school program. We're partnered with the National After-School Alliance out of D.C. and Flying Classroom to bring you the second STEM Fest event on May 3rd at East Gadsden Community Center. This event will be for over 15 hands-on, 10x10 years old families and students of all ages. Captain Barryson, the world-renowned pilot who was recently here on the Today Show in February, his great segment, if you have time to do the list, I think you would enjoy it, for his groundbreaking contributions to aviation and education. He will be on site during the book signing as well. Several of our community partners will be on site with resource tables. Last year, we welcomed over 300 participants to this event, and this year, we're aiming even higher. So, we would love for you to be a part of this celebration and see firsthand how our community and how Gadsden City Schools is committed to STEM and elevating STEM education for our students. It's so important, and we're so excited to have this event. I have provided flyers with additional information. This event will be at the East Gadsden Community Center.
I should have done that when I started, right?
Yeah.
The event will be at the East Gadsden...
If you could just start over.
Do I?
If you could just start over.
I will if you like me to, but I prefer not to. Ms. Carla and her crew at the East Gadsden Community Center are amazing, and we are having the event there this year, and so, we're excited to be there. Drop by any time, between 11:00 to 2:00. It's a come and go. You don't have to be there all day. I know several of you came last year, and you can, you know, attest to what a great time it was and how our students and families were able to just have a fun, engaging day, no cost to them. It's for any students in Gadsden City Schools, K through 12th. They can bring their families. We're going to have food, and we just hope to see you all there. It'll be a really great day. So, thank you for allowing me to speak today. And I also stuck another flyer in there for upcoming scholarship opportunity we have for students at the high school through our after-school program. So, it's a STEM camp. If the students register using that QR code, it will make them eligible to win a, or be awarded a $1,000 scholarship. We're doing two of those. And that is Mr. Jerome McQueen. I don't know if you guys are familiar with him, but he started Acostemics, which is a STEM-based program for students to encourage them in career pathways. We do these camps at the high school a few times a year, and he wanted to give back to Gadsden City because he felt like he had seen so many students growing in their STEM talent, and he wanted to do something that could benefit them in the long run. So, two seniors who had attended this camp or have attended a previous camp this year will have an opportunity to receive a $1,000 scholarship, two of them. So, get the word out, spread the word, and just thank you for all you do and your support for Gadsden City Schools. Thank you.
Mr. President, I have a question. Janie, can I ask you one quick question?
Sure.
Sorry, I didn't make the step on your applause.
It's okay.
But, I do have a quick question. For those citizens that don't have children or who aren't involved in the education process, could you explain just really briefly, what is STEM, and what does that acronym stand for, and why is it important?
Okay, it's, you're talking about technology, engineering, and math. Science, technology, engineering, and math. And, the career force now is very STEM-based. There are countless jobs open for students who can start out at a high school making vast amounts of money through workforce development. So, what we're doing with STEM is giving our students a head start. We are helping them to understand the design pathways, how to think beyond a book, to put things together, to engineer, develop, and design. And we are adamant, at Gadsden City Schools, about pushing this forward, because aviation, you guys, I'm sure are aware of all the jobs that are available in aviation, that you don't have to go to college for. You can just have a training. And so, STEM is giving students hands-on experience so they can find their talent. Everyone is not going to go get a four-year college degree. Everyone isn't going to get a master's. And if you choose to do that, that's great, but there are also opportunities where you can, through Flying Classroom, get into these programs, and you can be right in the workforce in its STEM-based related careers. And, they're needed. And so, we just try to open up that opportunity to our students so that they know what is out there and what is available.
And this actually addresses another major issue in education with the lack of females in these technology, engineering, and mathematics programs as well, right? And science.
We do girls, Girls Who STEM, and I'm sure you guys probably are aware that last year, our after-school program had a student selected for the National Moonshot Girls, and she went to California to do Girls Who STEM. And we also have a partnership, last summer with Gadsden State, we did a Girls Who STEM Summer Camp, and they loved it. And, you know, there's power in giving kids opportunity so that they can see what is out there. And so, yeah, Girls Who STEM is a thing.
I love it when I set them up and you knock them down. That was perfect explanation, Janie. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Those are very good. I appreciate Councilman Wilson bringing that up. I want everybody to also know, the City of Gadsden, the mayor's office, administration, and this council, this body, we are wholeheartedly support the efforts of the Gadsden City School System in the STEM all education, but specifically STEM education, as we're talking about today. And it dovetails imperfect to the $30 million investment the state of Alabama's made through our Gadsden State Community College with their Advanced Manufacturing Technology Center. The world has changed very fast, and there's new opportunities that are waiting students right this very moment. And what you're doing is providing that foundation so they can take that next step into the workforce. So, thank you for what you're doing.
You're welcome.
And we're proud to support you and the school system through all the efforts that we can. It's so vitally important for the future, not only of our city, y'all, but for the future of our country. So, this is, this is exciting stuff to hear.
Well, I appreciate it, and I do just want to take a minute to thank you guys and to also thank our administrators here with Gadsden City Schools, because our central office and our principals are so willing to say yes to anything that they feel will be beneficial to our students and our families. And so, without our team at the central office and at the schools and our students and our parents, it wouldn't be possible. If people don't show up, you can't do it. So, we appreciate everyone showing up, from the city council, to central office, to parents and students in the community. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Browning.
And I hope to see you at STEM Fest.
All right, y'all, that's exciting, but we have something even more exciting. We have some very special guests with us here today. This is, you might see a lot of folks out here in gray t-shirts. This is the Gadsden City High School Special Olympics Basketball and Cheerleading Teams. Welcome to the, welcome to the city council meeting. I know we have some exciting things to hear about you folks. First, we're going to go, I'm going to ask, I think, Ms. Lowry. You're here, right? And then, we have Sharon Maness from the Board of Education. Thomasina Brown Smithman is also with us, and so, I believe I saw Mr. Gollidge, our principal at Gadsden City High School. If y'all would like to come forward and share anything you'd like to share. And if I have left anyone out from the high school administration, please forgive me. I did the best I could.
Ms. Day, Emily Day.
I'm sorry.
Emily Day.
Emily.
We've got Principal Stripland.
And we have, yeah, from Stripland, Anthony Ash, our principal, and my good friend. Mr. Ash, come forward, please. Thanks, Councilman Avery. Well, Ms. Lowry, I've talked with you on the phone, and we've talked before.
Yes, sir.
I've met you before. Thank you so much for what you, and Ms. Emily, for what you do for our students, and we're excited to hear about what's going on.
Well, I've been coaching Special Olympics now, this is my 34th year.
Good, great.
Haven't retired simply because of Special Olympics. We started out with swimming when we were at the three high schools, and we was at MSAM, some in part of General Forest. But when we combined high schools, not only are we doing swimming, we were able to form a basketball team. And then, the following year, we formed a cheerleading team. And this year, we formed a unified cheerleading team that competed at state. And I'll let Ms. Day tell you a little bit more about that. And then, we also are doing track and field. So, we're very busy with Special Olympics, helping these kids know that they're worth something, and they may not be able to play regular sports, but they're able to combine them skills and play other sports together. And I'll tell you a little bit more about the basketball program when I introduce my basketball players.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Okay, so, I am Emily Day. I am a special education teacher and the special education specialist for Gadsden City High School, and this is my 25th year teaching. I started with Ms. Lowry at MSAM and then went to the new school, of course, when we combined. And I got the privilege to start helping the cheerleaders, I would say, maybe five or six years ago, but we just sat on the sidelines. I mean, we were the typical basketball cheerleaders where I taught them cheers, and, you know, we sat on the side, and we did our cheers, and we would stand up at the breaks and do maybe a stand-up cheer, and then sit back down. But, we were amazed that the state of Alabama opened up a new competition, which was a cheer competition this year with the state, the state Special Olympics Games. And one of the opportunities that it was, was that you could do a school or a squad that didn't just have your students with intellectual disabilities, you could have other students as well to be their partners. So, that's what unified cheer is. So, when you, my girls stand up, I want all of you to stand up. Some of, some of the girls are students that have intellectual disabilities or autism or other such disabilities, but then we have partners, two from the varsity cheer squad, if y'all will wave, and then a few that are there that are their partners. So, it has been a lot of fun this year, because as you can imagine, if you don't know how to maybe count music, you've never been asked to count music before, much less to do the cartwheel to the music or to build a pyramid and make a stunt, it really stretched these girls to do new, new things. I'm very proud of what they learned, and we did compete in Birmingham at ACE, and we did get a gold medal. So, girls, show them your medals. And I just want to put a plug in for Special Olympics in general, and I'm sure Ms. Lowry will say the same. We can do things with kids in the classroom, but there's a world of leadership and other opportunities when they are plugged into other activities. There are not only leadership benefits, there are health benefits, and just having that I'm, I'm part of a team, I'm part of a group, I represent my school, that, that brings a whole other part of self and self-esteem and accomplishment, and that's what it's done for these girls.
That's great. That is fantastic. Thank you so much for sharing that information. And girls, we're so proud of you. Thank you for your, all your hard work. It's wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With basketball, we go to state games also. We just, we competed in our March Madness, the beginning of March, March 7th and 8th. We, as a high school, are a pretty good darn good team because we played against adults. There's not a lot of high school teams that are doing Special Olympics basketball, but we're doing it, and we play against adult teams. We play against teams that have been playing together for several years. Our kids did really well. They fought hard. They came home with a silver medal, second place, in, in their division. They fought hard, and if I'll have all my boys stand up, they're great kids. And I have an assistant coach that I want to introduce you to. He's been a great help to me the last couple of years, and that's Rudy Rigby.
Hey, Rudy. That's a little point of personal privilege. Rudy and our son, Alan, played basketball together at Discu and Gadsden High School. I've known Rudy since he was just a little fella. He's not much of a little fella anymore, though. He's a, he's a pretty big fella. Man, it doesn't surprise me that Rudy's doing stuff like this, because he's just a great guy. He was a great young man, and now he's a great adult. Thank you, Rudy.
He's a great coach. He's a great coach. And just remember us, we're taking, we're taking 15 kids to Troy in May for their state Special Olympic swim meet. So, just remember those kids.
We will. Thank you. Thank you so much. Ms. Maness?
Yes. First of all, I would like to thank the City of Gadsden, and especially the city council and the mayor for all your support that you've always given our students with disabilities and the students in Gadsden City Schools. Mrs. Lowry, Ms. Day, Coach Rigby, they do an amazing job at the schools with our kids. And I wanted to recognize one individual, and I think Councilman Wilson will enjoy hearing this, but Reggie Lindsey, will you please stand?
War Eagle.
That's right. Reggie has also been accepted in the Eagles program at Auburn this year. We have one student, Chris, who is finishing this year, and Chris received the highest honor that you could receive as a student in the Eagles program at Auburn. And Chris and Reggie are pretty good buddies, and so Reggie has been picked to follow Chris down in Auburn. So, any support that we can give to Reggie in his endeavor, I think his mom is here?
Oh, no.
His aunt?
That's, that's me.
His aunt, yes. Would you stand, because she's a big supporter of Reggie, and she helps him with all of his endeavors as well. And so, we'd like to recognize her. And thank you for what you do. On behalf of Mr. Blackwell, who would have liked to have been here today, but he's at a conference, actually, he's returning today from a conference because we have an event tonight, and we would just like to say to you all, thank you, thank you for your support. We love the partnership, the community relationships with our kids with disabilities, and all of our students in Gadsden City Schools has been amazing. And so, I'd like to personally thank you, and thank you for all you do for us and our students.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Joel Gollidge is our, is our principal at our high school. For those of y'all that might not know, Joel, welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate y'all allowing me to speak with your second. And I'm just going to reiterate, you know, what a great job Ms. Lowry, Ms. Day, and Rudy do with our kids and the hard work they put in. You know, they play their games during school time, so if you ever get an opportunity, and we'll make sure you get a schedule next time, come out, watch them play basketball games. It's fun. We let the kids come in and watch sometimes, you know, kind of like a fundraiser, but they play hard, they play good. Couple of them, we could have probably had on the, on the boys' team this year. And they just pushed it a little bit.
There you go.
But again, I just want to say what a great job they do with the, with the kids, and what a great job the kids do. So, and really just kind of reiterate what Ms. Browning and Ms. Maness says, is I can't begin to thank you for what you do for us at the high school and the other schools as well, the support that you give us. You know, I heard years ago, when I served on accreditation team, as the city goes, so the school goes. As the school goes, the city goes. So, your success is our success, our success is your success, and this, this effort that we've come together and really working forward with each other is just great. And I can't begin to say thank you from, personally, from the high school, what you've done for, for our faculty, students, and the community, but also the other schools in Gadsden City Schools. And with that, the last time I was here, when I was here with the other basketball teams, Mayor Ford presented us with a challenge coin.
Yes.
If I can, I've, we've got our own challenge coin at the high school, so with your permission, I'd like to come forward and present each one with a challenge coin from the high school, just as a token to say thank you.
That's a, that's a good segue into this next portion.
Oh, yeah. Mayor Ford is not here today. Some of you may not know, but Mayor Ford serves our country in the National Guard, state of Alabama. He is a major. So, today, he's major, Craig Ford, and he's at a summer camp, I believe it's called, although it's not summer yet, I was teasing him about that. But, he's also the commander, you may have heard of Fort McClellan, which is over in Anniston. So, he's the commander of Fort McClellan. So, he is doing his duty. He serves our city as our mayor, but he also serves our country and our state as a major in the National Guard. So, he's very sorry he couldn't be here today. But he had asked me to give you each a challenge coin from, from the mayor, from the mayor of Gadsden. So, what we want to do, of course, we want to give you these coins, but we want y'all to line up behind these two gentlemen right here, and maybe even in the front. We want to get a picture so we can put it on our city website. So, as you come forward, if you'll just line up over here, we'll give you these coins, and then if you'll get up there, we'll, we'll take your picture. Yeah, you can, I'll, I'll give them one here, and you can give them one up there.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Yeah, congratulations. Oops, dropped it. I'm sorry. That was my fault. Congratulations. 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 Congratulations to you. Congratulations. Good job. Hey, how are you? Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. 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 Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. All right.
Let me get back up here. All right, everybody, look right here on the count of three. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Thank you all so much. Thank you. Thank you very much. Well, y'all, I just don't, I don't know if we could have a better day. It's just so, so good to see you students. We're so proud of what you have accomplished, all of your hard work. Thank you so much. And Ms. Lowry, thank you for 34 years of service and dedication to our city and our students and our families sent in Gadsden. That means a lot. Thank you. Okay.
Councilman Beck, I forgot to mention Mrs. Smithman, Thomasina Smithman, who is now the specially coordinator now for Gadsden City. So, she has, she's my right-hand person, and she's done a fantastic job of working with them at the high school.
I appreciate you saying that. Ms. Smithman, if you'd like, do you have anything you'd like to offer? Well, I've, I've known Ms. Smithman for many years, from her elementary teaching days with, with my wife, and I've followed your career. I'm so glad you're at the board, because I know that's going to make our system just that much stronger and that much better. You always, everywhere you go, you just leave a path of excellence. So, thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Excited for you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. All right, everybody, that's, again, thank everybody for their efforts today. Appreciate these folks coming to be with us. They're also getting some city swag from the mayor. That was a kind of added surprise. There's, I think, a City of Gadsden pullover that we're giving these students, and so, that's exciting. I know they'll enjoy wearing those. All right, well, we will move on in our agenda.
So she has, she's my right-hand person and she's done a fantastic job of working with them at the high school.
I appreciate you saying that. Ms. Smitherman, if you'd like, do you have anything you'd like to offer? Well, I've known Ms. Smitherman for many years from her elementary teaching days with my wife. And I've followed your career. I'm so glad you're at the board because I know that's going to make our system just that much stronger and that much better. You always, everywhere you go, you just leave a path of excellence. So thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Excited for you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am. All right, everybody. That's, again, thank everybody for their efforts today. Appreciate these folks coming to be with us. They're also getting some city swag from the mayor. That was a kind of added surprise. There's, I think, a City of Gadsden pullover that we're giving these students. And so that's exciting. I know they'll enjoy wearing those. All right, well, we will move on in our agenda. We are at item eight. It's unfinished business. We don't have any today. So agenda item nine is a public hearing. It's a resolution approving issuance of alcoholic beverage license. Quikity Split Liquor Mart Limited Liability Company, doing business as Quikity Split Liquor Store, located at 1401 East Broad Street, Suite A in District Two, has applied for a lounge retail liquor license, Class Two, which is a package store. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 10 is a resolution appointing members to Gadsden Commercial Development Authority. This appoints Jason Wilson, Gil Isbell, and Beth Ann Mashburn for terms expiring April 30, 2028. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, I'm going to abstain from the vote, but I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to rejoin this board as the former president of the Gadsden Commercial Development Authority and a 10-year member. I look forward to re-engaging and getting that organization turned around.
Thank you, Councilman Wilson. All right. Are there, is there any other discussion? If not, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt with one abstention.
We are glad to have you back on board the ship, Captain.
Yes, sir.
We look forward to all kind of good things happening. All right, now, item 11 is new business. I believe we have a couple of items all coming from Councilman Robinson this morning.
He's going to turn that around. Yes, Mr. President. The first one, I have several here. The first one's from the engineering department. It's 2025-378. It's a resolution authorizing a change order number one with boatner construction. It's budgeted for $1.25, 20 and 40 cents. This is for the new fire station number five, I believe, in Naklela Falls. If I could ask my colleagues to suspend the rules and ask for immediate consideration on this.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Moved to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Yeah, the second one here is also a request by the engineering department. It's 2025-374. It's a resolution authorizing a change order number one with Bob Smith Construction Company, and it's for the Naklela Falls Animal Habitat. Both of these are also coming out of the fiscal year 2025 capital project funding account. And this is budgeted for $1.28, 832, 15 cents. I would like to ask my colleagues to suspend the rules and consider this for immediate consideration today.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Moved to. Thank you.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Abstain.
We have one abstention. Motion carries to adopt.
The last one I have is from a request by the legal department. It's 2025-377. It's a resolution authorizing purchase of property located at 107 Irving Boulevard. This is a piece of property across the street from the falls that the city does own both sides of this property. So this would be a piece of property in the middle that we could do some serious positive things in the future with. If I could ask my colleagues to suspend the rules and ask this for immediate consideration today, please.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Moved to adopt, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
That concludes our new business. We'll move to item 12, department reports, committees, boards. I think we do have one this morning. Craig Scott, our library director, has graciously stayed and he could give his report. And before you start, I do want to make sure everybody does remember, and we're very proud of this, that Craig Scott is the state of Alabama, what, president of the?
Alabama Library Association.
Alabama Library Association. I know that's some extra work for you. Thank you for raising your hand to do that and for representing our city at a state level in a real prominent spot. Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Jason, before I get started on some library business, Chris Underwood, when Chris went off to the Eagles program, the library staff took up a collection and got him a case of toilet paper.
I love it.
For tumor's corner. I think it was 90 rolls, and we'll be doing the same thing for Reggie.
Oh, what a great idea.
Well, and the good news for Reggie too is that Chris Underwood will be staying in Auburn permanently in the community. So Reggie will have a familiar face and a friend there on campus that can support him throughout that. And I just can't say enough about how awesome it is that we've created this pipeline to Auburn University. And I hope we have to buy a whole bunch more toilet paper over the years.
That's it, yeah. And that, the beautiful Rainbow Cape Cafe program, it's just been outstanding since 2017 when they came to the library.
Well, your support of that program as they made that transition into the library, just put them on a different level and put that program on a different level. And you're to be commended for that, for sure.
Amen.
Yeah, thank you. So, Mr. President, council members, I'm Craig Scott, Director of the Library. So I think Iva has passed out, very good, my annual scorecard for all of you. I've done this for the last three years. I think this is a real easy, quick way to show you the value of the library to all of our citizens here. I want to point out two of the, two statistics. It's the first two you'll see. This past year for 2024, we had 22,803 registered cardholders, library cardholders. That's an increase of 2,000 over the previous year. Our visitors at 114,891, that's an increase of 2,400. So is your library well-used? You tell me. We're a busy place. In fact, lately, we've been the barnyard, it seems like, for the kids department. We've had baby goats and baby pigs, piglets. And we had a baby cow two weeks ago.
Getting sloths over there? I'll make a good price on one.
Yeah. And while the sloths don't travel, we were working with Christina to bring in some other animals from Naklela Falls, so. But it's a busy, busy place. So I want to recognize my staff again with National Library Week and specifically today with National Library Workers Day. Staff does a great job. Like Janie said about the school, the after-school program, 21st Century. I can't do it without a great staff behind me. So thank you for your support of them and of the library. Kent, you mentioned that I am the current president of the Alabama Library Association. That's taken up a lot of time. But right after this, I'm heading to Gunnersville. So I had the choice of a location for a convention, and I chose Gunnerville, the State Park Lodge and Convention Center up there. Some great facilities. And our convention starts tomorrow. So last year, we had, we're still trying to recover somewhat from the pandemic. Last year, we had 60 join us at the Homewood Public Library. And right now, we have just a bit over 200 registered for Gunnersville. So we're getting back to the way it used to be. So I'm real proud of that. I will be handing over the gavel on Saturday morning to the new incoming president. His name's James Galbreth, and he's with UAB, with the Lister Medical Library down at UAB. So I'll be handing that off to him. And then lastly, I want to mention our annual golf outing is coming up, May 9th at Twin Bridges with the new, well, I guess not the new sand traps quite yet, but May 9th. Please make a note of that, and we'll be sharing some information more about that with you guys. So guaranteed a lot warmer weather than it is out there right now. So thank you again.
All right. I have got a question just real quick. Do you have one too?
Yes.
All right. The 22,803 registered library patrons, do you, is there a way to break that down to know who, how many are in the city of Gadsden and how many reside outside the city?
Yep, zip codes. Yep, we can easily do that. And we can also break it further down for you. How many kids? How many teens? How many adults?
I'm just curious to see how many live in Gadsden and how many live outside of Gadsden.
Yeah. In fact, the last time I looked at that, it's about a 60/40 breakdown. So 60% being City of Gadsden residents and 40% being other communities in Etowah County.
Okay. Well, that might be good enough. I don't want to put you a lot of work. That's kind of what I was looking for.
Yeah, it's about a 60/40 breakdown.
Okay. All right, thank you. I think Councilman Avery had a question.
Since we're on live and we'll be on live, would you explain? I was at a district meeting and I made the announcement of the vending machine book process and idea. Can you go ahead and publicly re-announce that and kind of let us know where we are with that?
Councilman Avery, I'd be glad to. So the, my discussions with the mayor going back to last, late last summer with the budget, I saw an opportunity that we could put out two lib cabinets, they're officially called, but I call them library vending machines. So fancy, cool book machines, but expand out our reach into a couple of communities. One, the East Gadsden Community Center for the East Gadsden side of the river, and then also in the Carver Community. So both machines were installed last October, and then we ran into some issues. The machines were not communicating well with our library system. We have an integrated library system, and so it wasn't communicating well. But I'm very glad to say that that was fixed late last week. So we are about to go through a ribbon cutting. And we cut, in fact, with the students from Gadsden City High. Thanks to Mr. Gullidge and his drama teacher, Mr. Wooton. We have a video that Michael and Garrett have been working on and excited to see that. So we can get that out there and get the lib cabinets, the library vending machines, well-known. You'll need a library card, okay, to use the machine. But they're stocked with about 150, 160 items each of the machines. And we've got adult materials and kid and kids and teen materials too.
Thank you. Good question. Thank you.
Mr. President.
One more. Craig, I'm sorry. Here we go.
One acknowledgement, one question. First of all, I want to acknowledge you, which I try to do every year when you do this, and I believe this is one of the most impressive statistics on this sheet, 2,612 volunteer hours of service. That is incredible, Craig, and it's something to be commendable. For everything you guys do, on top of that, to be able to volunteer in this community in other ways and impact this community in other ways outside of those, the walls of those libraries is incredible, man.
Jason, thanks for bringing that up. So that gives me an opportunity to salute our friends group, as it's called. There are friends groups across the country, libraries. Everybody meets friends, right? So our friends group is our volunteer group, and they help manage our bookstore. As you come in the library, as you know, just inside the main entrance, we have a bookstore, and they manage that and run it well. And all the proceeds, when they're selling a book for a buck or two, all the proceeds come back to our library foundation.
That's incredible, man. The library community, to have supporters like that that are willing to volunteer their time and generate value for this community, like I said, it's just incredible that you're able to engage with the community and get those volunteers active. It's truly one of the most impressive statistics.
Appreciate that. One little caveat to that, this coming summer, in June and July, our busiest times with summer reading, with all the kids that come in, you know, when they're out of school. So we've just struck up a partnership with Darden Rehab. So we'll have three volunteers coming in, one for the kids department, one for the teen department, one for the adult department. And they'll be with us, and Darden will pay the cost. So we get the advantage of them, but they'll be adding to that, that volunteer hours.
And finally, the question I had, May 9th golf tournament, 8:00 AM tee time?
Yeah, we're going to do it like we usually do, Jason. That means everybody can show up around 10:00, 10:30 registration. We'll get lunch, you can go to the range, get ready, but it'll be a 1 o'clock shotgun start.
You're awesome, Craig. Three golf stars for 1 o'clock tee times.
Yep, yep. You don't have to get up early for ours.
Is this on like your social media where we could share it or anything?
It is. I've been holding this back because I wanted to get to you. Normally, I come here earlier in the year, but I was waiting for National Library Week to do this. But yes, it's about to go out. Yep.
That's great. That'd be nice to share. And I'll, great points you make, Councilman Wilson. That's, all these volunteer hours and the success we're seeing, it all comes from proper leadership.
Yep.
And so thank you for being a great leader. And that dovetails into what we just had today about the STEM and how our city is going in a certain direction, which is a positive direction. But it takes all these things, and every positive, vibrant community has a positive and vibrant library. I mean, you know, it's, for over 200 years, libraries are the core of, I think, every city for all the obvious reasons. Reading is so critical to young minds and to all of our minds, but in what happens in a library. So thank you for fostering what I'm going to proclaim a model library for cities to have. It's right here in Gadsden, so thank you for doing that.
Yeah, thank you for your support too. We appreciate it. Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other city departments or committees? If not, we'll go to council remarks. I believe it's just us council members. So Councilwoman Latham, if you'll start us off, please, ma'am.
Thank you, President Beck. Let me start by congratulating the Special Olympics on their accomplishments and as well to acknowledge those staff and educators who work with them. We congratulate them and thank you for those workers and educators who pay attention to their disabilities, but even more so highlight the abilities that they have. So we congratulate them on their recent victories. In connection with Mr. Scott and his remarks and the over 2,600 volunteer hours that they have, we appreciate you and recognize you doing this library week. Thank you. You were just a couple of weeks at the Boys and Girls Club and spent time there, and the young people thoroughly enjoyed your being there. So we thank you for that. I want to say thank you to Public Works, to Jason, and to those that were involved on placing our Berry Center. They placed it for us right outside of Green Pasture and just want to say thank you for that. We kind of looked at something that Councilwoman Monatra did in District Six and took a note page from her book. And so thank you for that. Thank Public Works for doing that display for us, helping us with that. I want to make mention, excuse me, of a young man a couple of weeks ago that we ran into. We were outriding in the district. It was almost dark and, and he was, he was picking up paper in the community. And I pulled up beside him and I said, what are you doing? And, no, I said, you don't have to do that, you know, with him and your name. And immediately, he kind of went on the defense because he was thinking that I was telling him, you don't have to do that. But I was saying in a sense of thank you. And his name is Leroux Watkins. And I wanted to mention that because it's just saying if we all took that kind of ownership of our communities. And I just want him to know that we appreciate him for doing that and just appreciate those constituents, especially all over the city, but especially in District One. Right now, we are, we've been bombarded with calls the last two or three weeks, but not just from people complaining or saying that there's a nuisance, but just trying to make things better in the community. And so we appreciate that. I'm asking you for a little time because it was a lot of calls and we're trying to get them routed to where they need to be. But I'm going to ask you just to continue to, one piece of paper at a time, one improvement at a time to make our district even better. So, and I'm going to give the- So, and I'm going to give the number because a lot of people say, well, when are you going to have a meeting so that we can just discuss some things? I want to say that it doesn't take a meeting or a public platform to stress your concerns about your district. We have an open door policy and we are here for your phone calls and do what we can to help in that process. So that number, you can call the clerk's office at any time, but then our city number is two five six four five eight six one nine one. And again, thank you, Mr. Watkins, for what you do and for those people that I haven't run into that are picking up paper and just speaking to a neighbor about the things that are going on in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just another good day of government. Want to congratulate the Titans, Boys and Girls, Special Olympics teams, great to have them here today and to honor them as well as all of the, those that work with them at the school and the school system. Of course, our superintendent and assistant superintendent, we appreciate you, especially remarks by Mr. Gullidge about the cities and schools working hand in hand together. I really like that. Want to just mention, Mr. Craig Scott, thank you, and the library staff, all that you all do. I really want to commend you on the way you handled that entire transition from the east side to the other side of town, even the meetings prior to the movement. That was really great. And even the meeting that you and I had together. So thank you for the way that situation was handled. Also, I want to just mention Mayor Ford and his absence, of course, to council. We appreciate all that the department heads do as well. And Ms. Janey Browning, what she does with the STEM program, I attended that last year, just a really great program, and we encourage everybody who can to come out and support that program. The Hay Gadsden app, I don't know how many people use it, but I thoroughly love using the Hay Gadsden app. I want to say this to those who may be listening live. The Hay Gadsden app would just allow you to really take care of a lot of issues on location, upload it, route it to the correct department, get a response back that has been received, keep you updated on the progress, and let you know when the case is closed. So when we tell people, use the Hay Gadsden app, it's really for value and a good reason because you can actually keep track of everything that you had a concern about in the city once we actually get there and upload the information. So thank you again to the city of Gadsden, the Hay Gadsden app, and those who helped develop that. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Smith. Councilman Avery?
Just want to say to District Three, to our citizens, make sure that we're checking our grass and making sure we get that, get those, call your lawn maintenance guys and get that taken care of, and also for those members that like Councilwoman Latham mentioned with her gentleman is, that is out picking up the trash in our community, that we continue to do it. We have a great neighborhood watch program and members and community organizations that aid with that. Want to thank Housing for the continuous efforts that they're doing. They actually have, I think, a grand opening event in Colley Homes coming up this weekend. So just pay attention to our Facebook page. Definitely want to ditto the Hay Gas Nap as a result to our abandoned housings and commercial buildings. We're tackling some now. We're getting ready for our second district meeting of the year, and so those will be our topic of discussions. We'll have the department heads there so that, again, so that we can make sure that those are highlighted and as we get ready to strategically tackle those abandoned houses and commercial properties in our community that's just been sitting there, nothing being done to them, and has been a blight and a decrease to people's property value that are interested in growing our community. And lastly, we've been working with some, doing some, working with some private groups that have been investing in our community. And so I am very appreciative of those organizations that are coming into our community, revitalizing the homes, restoring them, whether they sell them or that they lease them, and we are working with them to strategically lease them at a affordable cost. Because unfortunately now, when people talk about affordable housing, they're thinking twelve hundred bucks is affordable. And unfortunately, in our community, twelve hundred bucks is not affordable to a mass majority, while when you statistically look at the income and debt ratio and other factors. So nevertheless, again, thank you, District Three residents and our small businesses that keep our community rocking and rolling. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Avery. Councilman Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to reiterate the pride that I have in our basketball and cheer program for their success in the competition and obviously for Reggie and his acceptance into the Auburn University Eagles program. This is something, you know, I don't know of any other profession other than individuals who work with intellectually and physically challenged students that get emotional every time they talk about their job, and that's incredible. These teachers, if you notice, every single one of them, several of these mentioned, they'd been here for twenty-five years, thirty-four years, and they still get emotional every time they open their mouth to talk about what they do. And if that's not passion and if that's not to be commended, I don't know what is. I don't know anybody other than, well, maybe some members of our clergy on the, my colleagues in the clergy maybe get equally as emotional, but those teachers and that work with those intellectually and physically challenged students to help them overcome those challenges and live long and successful lives is, I don't know that there's anything better in the world. And to the library, again, congratulations, you know, as much, as much as this library has going on, it's so incredible that we haven't lost our small-town feel and those individual relationships. I've had members of your staff, Craig, deliver books to my house before on the way home in the afternoon because I couldn't make it in time before the library closed. There's, it's just a level of service that you don't see in other communities, and I'm very, very proud of what you guys have accomplished. And by the time you cycle back on to take that gavel over again in a few years, I hope to have a world-class hotel and convention center here on site that we can host that annual meeting. I told the mayor, if that hotel is here, I can still influence some. Hopefully twenty twenty-seven, next year is Tuscaloosa, but after that. Well, we definitely got to get past that. All right, that's all I have.
That's right. Amen to all of that. Councilwoman Monatra.
Thank you, President Beck. I just want to make mention that this Saturday, April the twelfth, is Heart Day, and Riverview is hosting basically a screening for many things, such as not just your heart, but your blood pressure and much more. There is a cost, it is twenty dollars, and there is a registration. And the number to call for an appointment is two five six five four three fifty-seven forty-one. But it's vitally important to take care of yourself because we all have a lot to give to our community and to our friends and family. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one on Saturday, April twelfth also, and I would suggest that if you're going to this Saturday, April twelfth, you go to that Saturday after twelfth first because this is our annual barbecue competition at Smoke on the Falls, where you get to walk around and nibble on barbecue all day. So do that first, then come here. Yeah, we have Smoke on the Falls this Saturday, April twelfth. It's free admission, of course. It starts at ten o'clock. There'll be food trucks there, there's a beer tent, and there's live music. I think the live music lineup says right here is one o'clock. We have John Player, which he's a local guy, I guess everybody knows John Player, followed by Flora Bama. Did I say that right? Flora Bama? Is that how you say that? Flora Bama? I just, I've always said Flora Bama, it's kind of weird. But Tim Roberts Band, and the award ceremony starts there at four thirty, so you guys go up there and check that out. It's got seventy teams this year, thirty-three professionals and thirty-seven backyard teams and fifteen kid queue teams. You know, I talked about the kid queue last week. All these teams, they come from anywhere from, of course, Alabama, Florida, Georgia, Texas, Mississippi, Tennessee, Illinois, Maryland, and Virginia. So all these folks will be up there at our new campground experiencing that and going back out telling everybody how great Gadsden is. That's all, Mr. President. Thanks.
Sounds good, Mr. President. I just want to commend Councilman Robinson on what a great job he did convincing people that he didn't know what Flora Bama was.
I've never been to Flora Bama. Put that on the record. Fifty-two years old, I've never been to Flora Bama.
I can't say that. So I do want to thank the Gadsden City High School for being here today with their students. What a wonderful day and what a wonderful program we have in our school system for all of our students, and I'm just proud of, proud of our school system and proud of what they do, proud of those students. Y'all, they work very hard to achieve those things. If you picked up on what Ms. Lowery said, there's not many high school basketball teams, so they're playing against people, I don't know, probably three to five years older than them, and they won silver medal. So kudos to those folks for how hard they work and their dedication. Also, wanted to remind everybody, last week, I mentioned the Damon Johnson concert at the Pittman Theater, and it's, and I left out some things I shouldn't have left out, but it's April the seventeenth, which is a Thursday night. It starts at seven, I believe the doors open at six. The floor is sold out, but the balcony tickets are still available. Y'all, if you haven't been to the Pittman in recent years, and if you haven't been up in the balcony, it's all improved seating, the whole place has been refurbished on the inside. Probably the better seats for a concert like this are actually literally in the balcony, the way the sound goes and just the comfort of those. If you're sitting in the floor, it's not bad, but you're sitting in, you know, your typical plastic chairs or the fiberglass type chairs. Up in the balcony, I think they're cushioned seats, so they're actually probably better seats. They're thirty-five dollars, but the things that I left out that I shouldn't have left out, Damon Johnson, as I bragged on him, he's the lead guitarist for Lynyrd Skynyrd. He formed the band Brother Kane, if you're familiar with that, and he plays all, literally all over the world. He's from Geraldine, Alabama, and he comes here annually for this concert. It raises money. The money raised and the ticket money goes to Downtown Gadsden Incorporated, DGI. Everything we see on Broad Street, the lights on top of the buildings, the planters, all the stuff Kay Moore does, this concert, the proceeds from that help fund that. So that's the purpose of the concert, other than to have a good time. But local musician John Player, and his name was mentioned earlier, is also going to play with Damon. If y'all have never heard John Player play the guitar or the bass or any kind of instrument that he plays, he is a world-class musician, and he lives right here in our city, and he plays all the time locally, but he's going to be part of this. There's also a percussionist named Gino Pledger. I believe Gino lives in Gunnersville, if I'm not mistaken, and he plays with Damon when Damon does local gigs. So it's going to be a great night of music. I strongly encourage you to, you will really enjoy yourself. It's an acoustic set, so it's not a lot of loud banging music. As you get my age, that's really not my favorite anymore, so I like the more acoustic setting. This is going to be real special. So just want to remind everybody, you can get your tickets at Downtown Gadsden Incorporated. You can get them online at downtowngadsden.com. You can also call for more information at two five six five four seven eight six nine six. So thank you very much for your kind attention for that. And that's all that I have. We've had a great day here at City Hall. Enjoy yourself this week, everybody. Be mindful of others. The weather's getting a little cold. Be careful with anything that might need some attention in that regard, and we will see you all back here next Tuesday. Have a great week.